All right, so the meeting was already called to order previously and we did the rule call. But I would like to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Did everyone, let's see, we're going to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved. The consent agenda, we got the bills to pay report on there yesterday. But did we get the, the minutes are waiting till the next?
Correct.
Okay, so everything that's on the consent agenda, we're just missing the minutes and we'll catch those up at the next meeting. But do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval of consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go right into reports. First things first, hopefully everyone heard, but we were approved to lift the boil water advisory. So yay! And we have Craig here, so we're gonna ask him a few questions or he's gonna give us his report. But anyways, also want to make sure everyone knows about 4th of July. There was some rumors that 4th of July was canceled this year in the town of Alpine. That's not the case. We've been playing this for quite some time. As Councilmember Larson would know, we've, we put in an application to fund part of the fireworks, which was approved. So this has been in the works for a long time. There's actually a lot going on. And maybe you could bring us up to date with that, just real quick. You know about some of the events that are happening on 4th of July other than the parade at the Civic Center.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be vendors over there.
Vendors starting at noon.
At noon, and then food vendors I saw are coming at two. There's a scavenger hunt at three.
Three.
Three to five.
Three to five, right.
And a very generous community member, Krista Tidwell, has put that together for us. We appreciate her efforts. And then of course, the parade at seven.
Yep.
Fireworks at dusk.
And I will say, oh, sorry.
No, and the night before. The night before at the farmer's market, the Linford Band would be playing from seven to nine to kick off the weekend.
Kick off music in the mountains on Thursday night, so come and hit the farmer's market and listen to some live music. So that's great. Yeah, that's perfect. We needed to make sure we had that in there. And then one thing, we, we did put out kind of a, we're asking for help this year on the parade. And we put out a flyer today, kind of in a text. But what we're looking for is some involved, or people that wanna get involved in maybe doing the parade can be their project every year. But we would add them to the special events committee and just see if we can find some other people to just get involved, do some of these things that end up, staff end up doing. But if anyone wants to get involved in anything, if you're passionate about it, or if you're not passionate about anybody, anything in particular, but you have time, we can find things for you to do. So with that being said, I'll move on to the treasurer clerk's report.
Good evening. I've been in contact recently with Decoria and Company, our CPA that is doing our single audit for the town of Alpine for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. They're just at this point wrapping up the, the final details. So hopefully we'll see that soon. I've also been working since, now that we're past the budget. And this evening, there's the updates to the employee policy handbook. I've now shifted to drafting some, some edits to the financial policy that we already have in place and add an additional ACH policy for vendors, employee spending limits and purchasing policies. So I'm working on that. So you guys should probably see that soon to review.
Yeah.
Yeah. End of the year work. I'm already starting to shift my focus now that the budget's done to, what needs to be done to close out the end of the fiscal year. So, cause that's done. So it's a process that'll last into September, October. Our accountant is scheduled to come in October to help with that as well, to do his portion of it. And sometime between now and then, we'll do the F-66 that's required by the state. Codification work is complete. I forwarded Jim to you today. The notes from our meeting with the company doing the codification. So I just want you to take a look at them. When you see them, just make sure he didn't miss anything. But he has sent the proof documents to their editors to create the final proofs. And then, so we should be seeing that soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just so everyone here in attendance and people at home know, explain what the codification was and how long ago we started it.
Yeah, so the codification was a process that was bid right after I started as clerk treasurer, which would have been January of 2023. I know it was adopted, to do that process shortly thereafter. So there was a huge amount of work with the collection of all of the old ordinances. They all had to be organized and sent to them and traced about whether or not they were actually repealed and replaced. And if they were repealed and replaced, what they were repealed and replaced with. They then edited our work. They did find one ordinance that we have adopted, that the town had adopted an ordinance to replace in Land use development code, and that ordinance was still in the books. So that is something that's going to be addressed through the Land Use Development Code updates that we're doing right now to, to make that modification. So the process of codification basically is take all the laws that are individual pieces of paper, multiple pieces of paper, and they organize them in a way that makes sense. So, into a book by, I mean, Jim, what would, what's the correct terminology to how they organize that?
By, first of all, by titles and sections and chapters.
They also make sure they're very uniform.
Yeah.
Like we're using the same kind of nomenclature and standard for everything. So
Yeah.
Of course, things have changed over the years, the last 30 years in how we do things or whatever. But now we should have kind of a uniform set of laws and ordinances in place. And they should all kind of look the same. And I'm surprised that we only found one that wasn't repealed. But in general, this has been a very long process, as you can tell, and it takes a fair amount of time to get through it. And so we appreciate, that's why we hired someone else to do it, because Jim doesn't have time like that. But this, this is all this company does as well. So.
Yeah, and so it'll, so once the document's complete, it'll be searchable. So that if you wanna know what it says about dogs, what laws refer to dogs, you will be able to type the word dogs in, and it doesn't matter if it was adopted back in 1989 when the town was formed. If it was adopted, you know, recently, you will be able to fit, find what the law is about dogs.
Right.
So it's, it's gonna be great.
We've had people recently come in and go through the three ring binders that have all the old ordinances in place just to go and find something. And of course, that's a, you know, we, we have to do that. We have to allow people to do that. But this will be a much easier way for people to do their research.
Yeah, it really will.
We, we should land that when?
They did not provide a timeline. He just said, it's done, it's going to the editors. So I would imagine another couple.
A few more months, yes. Okay, so this fall, we'll hopefully get that. Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, next we'll have Craig up. He's gonna give us a, a report. He really doesn't have anything to talk about.
Yeah, it's been pretty slow.
Nothing going on, but all right, Craig, give us, give us your report.
So I'll just touch briefly on the main break. At 10:15 Thursday night, the main broke. Dan Halsted, Brian Booth and myself came in. And at roughly 11:40, we got the tanks to quit draining. We determined where the brake was. That there was no possible way that I was gonna be able to fill the tanks just because of where the brake was, that I couldn't isolate it. So it broke right at the wellhouse. And so about one o'clock, we went home and there was still three feet of water roughly in the tanks. And I knew it was a matter of time before the tanks ran out. And that's exactly what happened, probably around, I don't know, 9:30 or something. I think at eight, I had a little bit of water still here. So that's what happened with that. Nate Dorian with Alpine Excavation had his guys there at six and they got right on it. I called EPA at 8:30. And EPA notified me of the next steps of what we have to do because this was a pressure loss. There's been some misinformation that I wanna negate right now, that there has been reports that construction crews hit the main. That's false.
Absolutely not.
There's also been reports that the reason the boil order was in, in effect was because we had E. coli test positive. That is also incorrect. So I just wanna negate that right away. So EPA notified us that we were gonna have to be put on a boil order notice primarily out of precaution because of the pressure loss. And Mr. Larson, thank you for all your help getting the, and Monica as well. We had to go door to door and it was pretty hectic Friday. So. I also wanna thank Trevor from Star Valley Ranch who assisted with his, sending his guys up to pass out notices. That was huge. Everybody just came together. Alpine Field Crew, Office, Nate Dorian and his crew with Alpine X. Everybody just kinda came together to get it back up and going. We got it up and going around one. I also wanna make it very clear that when we put new parts in, we disinfect them extremely thoroughly with, with a chlorine solution. So we don't put anything dirty in the water system. The system, we got fired back up at one. I took a sample per EPA requirements Friday at four. I took it down to Ron at the lab and bless his heart, he, I owe him a huge thank you too, because he works through the weekend. He normally never does that. I begged and pleaded and he did. So Friday, I took the first sample down. Got the results back Saturday. At four, it passed. I took my second sample Saturday. Got those results Sunday at four. Those passed.
And when you say passed, that means it was.
They tested negative, correct. So they tested negative for coliform and E. coli, both. So that's the best that you can do. Monday morning, had a Zoom meeting with mayor and EPA. They had told me that the samples that they, that I took were wrong. And I said, well, you told me where to take them. So I was just doing what I was instructed. They went up through the chain of command. So they wanted two additional samples, which were Monday. At the subway, north side of the river and the south side of the river, town shop, did both those. And got the results today at roughly two o'clock. Passed negative for E. coli and coliform. So everything is good to go. I owe a huge thanks to Ron in the Afton Water. Everybody just came together, different municipalities. It was really a, it was really a cool thing to see.
We'll keep that in mind when they have an issue, but they, like Star Valley Ranch jumped in, obviously Afton helped us out.
Yeah, yeah.
All the work that the, the town employees put in, especially Craig, I mean, it was incredible.
It was, it was a good, yeah, yep.
It was a community bonding effort.
It was a community bonding effort. Yeah, I think there, there's three left and we've purchased 20. So we've gone through.
So thank goodness, Brohlum's had 20 pallets of water on hand.
And yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I owe a huge thanks to Brohlum's too, because when we talked to them, they would get us as much water as we needed. So like they, they were instrumental in that as well. So, yeah, yep.
We'll, we'll leave those pallets out so people can still grab water if they are not comfortable with the current water that we have or
Okay.
It may taste a little funny or whatever to some people. We'll leave those out for a certain amount of time. Please come grab some more. We'll probably, whatever's left over, we're gonna keep at the shop.
Yep.
Just in case, you know, something else happens. But yeah, huge thank you to Craig.
Yeah.
Specifically, we, after the week that you put in before, that was not how you wanted.
That's not how I wanted to end this week, that's for sure.
But any questions for Craig or what happened or?
We were just talking about having an after actions meeting.
Yeah, has that been scheduled?
Not yet.
Okay, so we want to kinda have a recap of what happened, what we could do better. And so we're gonna bring together Craig and the crew and we're going to come up with
Some SOPs.
Yeah, some standard operating procedures. So when this happens again, whether, who knows, Craig may not, Craig may be on vacation next time this happens. So we just need to have a three ring binder someplace where someone can open it up. So step one, call Nate Dorian, you know, whatever it is. So hopefully Nate.
1-800-Alpine-X.
Hopefully he's not on vacation. But so yeah, we'll be working through, I mean, we haven't gotten much feedback from the community as far as like what we could do better, but we're interested in what we can do better for sure. So.
And this, this highlights the issue of tying in the mega well. If the mega well was tied in, this would have been a non-issue. Except for Mr. Corsey that lives on Nelson Lane, he would have been placed on a boil order. But he would have been the only one, because the mega well could have filled the tanks from the other side.
Isolated the problem.
Yep, I would have isolated the problem immediately and we would have had a well on the other side. The, the soonest that that can happen, if everything goes 100% good, would be the first of August next year. The flying saddle wells, we have to do something with those. They're not connect, there's a little work that needs to be done. There's a break. We could utilize those in, in the interim, which would be get those connected, the testing, everything passed through EPA. We'd have to do some re permitting and stuff. But those produce about 150 gallons a minute. That would have bought us enough time to where we could have avoided this disaster. So that's something that we can all think about moving forward, not tonight.
We need to decide what the biggest priority is, and that might be something that we can handle in a short amount of time.
Right, that, yes, yep.
That would help us out for sure. And then we focus on the mega well and what that's going to take and who's going to fund that. So.
Yep.
Anyways.
But don't those have to be re-drilled?
The flying saddle wells?
Yeah. Oh, no, just, okay, just.
So there's just a broken pipe right outside of there. We, since we bought that system, we haven't utilized those wells because they, they don't produce very much.
They don't produce a lot of water.
Right, yep, but Friday.
We might as well use them.
Yeah, minimal investment, they could be a great backup.
Friday, I would have taken any drop of water. I could have, you know? And if everybody would have woke up Friday morning and not used an ounce of water until we got it fixed, it would have been perfect. No boil order. But that's, you know, that's not gonna happen, you know? I saw that the bank of Alpine sprinklers on and they were getting lower and lower.
Well, and, and it goes back to things that we could do better. But you know, if we would have got the notice out right away, you know.
Right.
It, it could have happened overnight, but it's just not possible to do some of that stuff the way we're currently set up.
Right.
So we're gonna figure out ways to inform everyone.
Yep.
You know, I got up in the morning and turned on the faucet.
Right.
So I didn't know. And I'm the mayor. So anyways, we'll figure that.
And, and that leads me to my next point. If everybody, and I know a lot of people have, but a lot of people haven't, text my gov.
Yes.
That's huge. There's one of me and there's 1,500 people in town probably.
We, we're gonna have a big push on that and I think we're gonna have some, you know, prizes for, I don't know how we're gonna do it.
Right.
We need to encourage everyone to sign up for text alerts, because that is the fastest way for us to get the word out about anything that happened in the town. Good or bad.
Right.
That's the easiest.
And I, I don't mind talking to people, but I can't. Friday, I, I was on the phone, I had a phone call every five minutes from six in the morning until 6:30 at night, every five minutes. So. Not that I mind it, you know, but text alert is the fastest, quickest way to get information to the masses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have a big push on that. But anyways, we really appreciate everything you did. Thanks for being here. You didn't have to be here, but.
Any other questions about the main break?
Do we know why it broke?
No, we don't. Yeah, it, it was a 30-year-old pipe and it was part of the first original well. And it was Schedule 40, which is not really thick stuff. And it was, it was rubbing on the concrete. And those pipes right there, every time a well kicks on, there's pressure changes and it just got weak.
I know you try to look into the future and see what needs to be updated and replaced.
So I know what I wanna do after, the first thing is getting a supply on that side of the river. But once the mega well's tied in, I want to get ductile iron on those three lines out past the valves, so that will never happen again.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yep.
And all of the other town employees.
Yeah, Dan Halsted.
Cations, so.
We didn't notice.
We were talking smack.
Right, yeah. Dan Halsted and Brian Booth, I gotta owe those guys. They got the alarms and man, they just jumped in right at 11 o'clock at night. So I really appreciate those guys. And I appreciate my whole crew Friday, you know, everybody. It was amazing to see, for sure. So any other questions on the main break?
Do you have more of a report?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll let you fire it away.
So radio read update, the town will be done with our portion if everything goes good by Tuesday. So all of our meters should be completely installed by Tuesday, Wednesday-ish, which will be good because then it frees up two more guys to do other stuff. Corin Maine, they started installing their vaults today. They got two vaults in today. And they got the meters changed out, which is really good to see. And then next week, Monday, they're gonna start again on two more vaults. And then the one-inch meters won't be here until late July-ish. So that's when they're gonna start doing the inside meters.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and let's make sure that we give all those people that have those plenty of time.
Yep.
Because those need to be scheduled.
Yep, they do for sure. Absolutely. Yep. Any questions on that? Perfect. The water master plan update, special meeting is gonna be on July 16th at seven. Correct, Sarah? Okay, we got that advertised? Perfect. I've got the draft.
Where, where's that located, that special meeting?
Here, yep.
I didn't know if we were doing it at the Civic Center.
Nope, it'll be here.
And that's with sunrise?
Yep, that's with sunrise.
Okay.
I've got the draft. I haven't even hardly had a chance to look at it. It's like 500 pages. So.
So will we post that or not till after?
I think, I think what we'll do is we'll make sure you get the draft to Monica, if she doesn't have it already.
Right.
And then we'll get it to us so we can read the draft. And then, once we have the findings after that meeting on the
16th.
16th, okay. Which I'll be here for then.
I mean, just so.
Is it July 16th?
July 16th, yep.
I'll be here for it. And then after we have those findings, then we'll post it out to the public.
Yep, perfect. On the water master plan, so there's a little bit more discretionary funding that they, they can use. And one of their concerns is well three up at Gray's River Road. It's producing about 150 gallons per minute less than it should be. That should be our best well. So the discretionary funding covers them to come and pull the well as well as put it back in, but it doesn't include the cost to, to rebuild it if we need to. And so I kinda need to know, so if they, they're planning on pulling it on Monday and if they do find that it has to be rebuilt, they would have to take it to the shop in Idaho Falls and then come back Thursday and re-put it in. And I talked to Ryan and I don't wanna be down that well because our demand is so up. And I have
Tell me again the dates.
Monday.
He wants to pull it on Monday and he'd have it back on Thursday.
Yeah, he would have it back on Thursday. And that would be right against how much those two wells can produce. So one option, and I've got, I'm getting quotes, is just buying a brand new pump and bringing that with them and they can pull one out and pull one in and we're not down any downtime. That would make me feel best. I'll get everybody that needs the information, the information, and we can make a determination before Monday.
How much is the pump?
I don't know yet.
Oh.
They're, yeah, I'm finding out.
The rebuild cost and, okay.
Yep.
But obviously we budgeted for things like this, but we'll
Right.
I'll, I'll let, he'll send the quotes. We'll make sure everyone knows and then
Right, yep.
Pull the trigger on whichever ones. Now, if we do get it rebuilt and that's down for a few days, should we consider asking people not to irrigate or take days off or something?
Yep.
Okay.
We could, and we could do that instead of buying a new pump. I could shut all the town irrigation off, which we use a lot of water.
Yeah.
And if everybody else would join that, that deal, we, we should.
Or limit it or something.
Yep, we should be good.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, and then that's all I got on the master plan update. Dust control for the dirt roads, which is sunset terrace, all the dirt roads up on the hill, that's gonna happen tomorrow. And then 4th of July, the parade, the road will be closed from seven to eight.
Yep. Let's get an alert out.
That's what I was just gonna say. We need to send out a text alert on that.
Send that in the morning. You say it's tomorrow, right? What, what are they doing, the dust mitigation?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so let's get an alert sent out in the morning.
And we'll get, we'll try to get some signs out there first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Anything else?
Go home and rest.
Are we good? Perfect. Thank you guys. Yep, thank you, Craig.
Yeah, hey, Craig! We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is the code enforcement officer's report, and that's online. But we will go right into, Todd Cristiano is here from RepTalis. And he is here to, oh, that's, I'll pull up the oh, that's, I'll pull up the slides. Here we go. Um, now maximize this. All right.
I'm on.
You're on. Welcome to Alpine. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you. Uh, well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My presentation tonight really summarizes the work that we've been going through over the past, oh, almost six months. Putting together water and wastewater tap fees. What makes this a little bit unusual is that the town doesn't have existing capacity fees. I say tap fees, capacity fees. They'll be interchangeable as I go through the presentation, but the town does not have capacity fees, so we're kinda building this from the ground up. And so, there were a lot of, a lot of meetings and lots of review of information as we went back and forth. So, we try to uncover every stone as we went through the process. So, next slide for me. So, I've got a couple of topics I wanna discuss tonight. One of them is the Wyoming statutes and the rest here, capacity fees, the definition, what they're used for and what they mean. And then we'll talk about what the results of the water and capacity fee calculations were. And one other thing we had talked about offline with Mon- with Monica and the mayor here was, we were talking about capital project delivery. That's something that Raftalis does. I was gonna provide just a two-second or 30-second blip about what that is that we can help with. So, next slide. It's been a while since we had proposed on this back in November. Just a real quick, Raftalis is a nationwide firm. We have offices across the United States. Makes it seem like all we like to do is work for large organizations, you know, San Diego, Salt Lake City, whereas those are great entities to work for. Those rates that don't come around that often. And so, our real bread and butter are communities like the town of Alpine, like the town, city of Laramie, Rock Springs where we're working right now, and a number of communities in Colorado. We do lots of other things besides utility finance and we've helped with a number of communities along the Rocky Mountains with, with some of those items there. So, next slide. Okay, Wyoming statutes. It's been a while since I watched Law and Order, so I'm not an attorney. But what I've captured here is from some research that, that I had looked at over the years. From Rocky Mountain Institute had published a book about enabling legislation for impact fees to the Rocky Mountain states. And many of the states do have enabling legislation, Utah, Idaho, Montana, Colorado, Arizona, and Texas as well. But Wyoming doesn't specifically have those statutes that have specific enabling legislation that say, here are the steps, here's the process you need to go through. Not how do you calculate the fee, but here are the steps you need to go through. That's what trips people up a lot of times. They haven't gone through the process correctly. But in Wyoming, they don't. But however, this, 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 this report, this book provided some context around how the basis for capacity fees are. And it lists one of the statutes here from the state's statute. And there was also a, a court case in the city of Rollins about whether they could charge an impact fee to a new development that was exp- required expansion of the system and they ruled that they could. Like I said, I'm not an attorney, but these were two things that came out of that chapter specifically about Wyoming. So, just wanted to provide that information for you. Next slide. So, here's a, capacity fees defined. There's a couple of terms, rational nexus, rough proportionality, and these all come out of a couple of court cases and I've written them down. Pronounced them correctly, but that really defined how impact fees are viewed by the courts. There's a Nolan versus the California Coastal Commission and Dolan versus the City of Tigard. They really framed the requirements and the takings clause associated with impact fees. And a lot of impact fee cases and a lot of procedures for impact fees kinda have to, they follow these, these, the results of these court cases. And all comes down to rough proportionality and that there needs to be a logical connection between what the new development is getting and what they're paying. So, that's, that's kinda the, the baseline for impact fees. But, and I kinda mentioned the first one there. And we need to identify the, the costs of newer expanded facilities needed to accommodate growth. And we also have to have approximate apportionment, which means we need to be, you know, the price needs to match what, what the development is getting. Next slide. And it's a one-time, capacity fee is a one-time fee. When new development comes in or perhaps when, let's say, a brewer decides to buy an old gas station with a 3/4-inch meter and now all of a sudden you need a 2-inch meter, that upsizing the meter might be appropriate for, to charge incremental, incremental cap- capacity fee. And it's, the key thing is it's, the capacity fee is based on the value of the system and the capacity required by the new development. And the fee is really a representation of reserving capacity in the system. The new development doesn't own any part of the system. They can't take it with them when they leave, but they're reserving their portion of the capacity in the system and making sure there's appropriate level of demands and capacity available and level of service to provide service to that new development. And more importantly, with a growing community such as the town of Alpine, it balances the equity between existing rate payers and new development. If I were an existing rate payer here for 20 years and they're going to install a new 24-inch main down the road for new development only, if we didn't have impact fees, that burden would be upon the existing rate payers to help fund that. But if I'm an existing rate payer, I'm already here. Why should I have to pay for that? I'm already using my portion of the system. That's the, that's kinda the context of impact fees. So, when, when developing that, it's really trying to balance that equity between the existing and, and new rate payers. It's not achieved overnight when you start charging impact fees because you need to build the facilities first and then accumulate the funds to kinda repay the, the bank account in a sense to, to really have this growth pay for growth mentality. Next slide. Uh, so there's two things here. There are connection fees and capacity fees. The town currently has connection fees and this is one of the things we went over when I gave my first review to, to Monica, was that there are connection fees. However, they're different than capacity fees. The connection fees are for the physical connection from the tap to the service line and all those things I mentioned there, the mainline type, the saddle, and the other equipment. So, it's just the physical pieces. The capacity fee again is the reservation of capacity in the system. And it's not, not a physical, it's a physical thing, but it's the reservation of capacity. So, those are two very different things. And so, we're not double counting when we have a connection fee and a capacity fee. So, they're two very separate. Next slide. So, the basics of the capacity fee methodology example here, and this is for water, and really we talk about the value of the system. So, here you've got some icons here, the water treatment plant. I know you have wells here. You have water treatment plant, you have your transmission and distribution or TND. You have storage, you have pumping, and these are all major facilities that, that provide benefit to all customers. We're not talking about a pump station that might provide benefit to Mrs. Jones on Maple Street. We know the value of the system. There's a couple of ways we can value the system. And we have to look at the value of your current facilities that have capacity and any sort of future facilities you might be adding, you might be adding capacity. Get those numbers together, get a full valuation of the system. We look at, well, what's the capacity that can be served by those facilities? We get A divided by B. It's a dollars per unit cost of capacity, usually stated in dollars per gallons per day of capacity. And then we need to find out, well, how much is new development? What's their, what are they gonna need? What's their demand? And typically, the, the basis for this is the baseline is usually the smallest meter size in, in the utility, which is typically a 3/4-inch, sometimes 5-inch. And we might estimate, well, what's the demand for the peak capacity demand in theory that a single-family customer could put through a 3/4-inch meter? And we look at that and we, we try to associate with some sort of peak, what's a peak demand because we're talking about the capacity of the system. Capacity is, is a design basis of peak demand, so we're trying to marry those two components together. And that gives us our 3/4-inch tap fee, our capacity fee. And then for larger meter sizes, we usually scale that up. It's typically scaled up by meter size, by meter capacity ratios. I'll talk about that in, in just a second. So, calculation's very basic, right, but it's getting the numerator and the denominator, which we spent a lot of time on, getting those dialed in. So, next slide. Uh, so some of the capacity fee assumptions, and this is, this is what makes this study interesting, is that normally, we could go to a utility and say, hey, just give us your master plan off the shelf and give us all your design capacity and we could just put it together real quickly. We didn't have that available to us. I know it's, it's underway. So, we had to really rely on the expert knowledge of Craig, Kevin, Monica, and everybody else to put together these values. So, you can see here, we got some facility costs through the engineers. We used water billing data from Melody and just a lot of discussions with staff to put this together. And so, we do, it's based on our best information available at the time. Uh, I would recommend as we go through this, because this is a new fee for the town, that you go back and evaluate this regularly going forward because it is a new fee and we'll have to get, you know, we have to introduce this to the community, new development, and make sure that they're comfortable with it as well. So, next slide. So, here's the results. We've got the water capacity fees on the left and the wastewater capacity fee on the, on the right. The water capacity fees are based on meter size and you can see that second column, this is maximum allowable capacity. What we're saying here is that if the 3/4-inch meter is $7,925, we're gonna scale that to a 1-inch meter based on the ratio of capacity that can go through that meter in gallons per minute from a 1-inch to a 3/4-inch. That ratio times the 7,925. Now, does that represent every 1-inch demand of a new development? Probably not. But this is a well-tested, tried and true method or schedule of tap, the capacity fees that are used. And it's well-understood, it's easy to understand, it's very easy to administer. Uh, there are some really complicated capacity fee schedules based on lot size and irrigable area and that, that just gets really complicated. Uh, this is a standard issue, right? This is the Toyota Camry of rate schedules for capacity fees. Wastewater capacity fee's a little different. It's $9,080 per ERU. Well, how's that different than a 3/4-inch meter? Well, it's kinda the same in a sense that an ERU essentially is, was it 22 fixtures? 22 fix- 20, 25 fixtures. Uh, it somewhat represents a single-family home and it scales up, it scales up more incrementally. So, you could have a .1 ERU or .2, or I think it's .5 and 1 and ., you're going up. 1 and 1/2, okay. So, you get a little bit more customization than, than you would with a, the water side with a 3/4-inch and 1-inch. There's no, there's no in-between on 3/4-inch and a 1-inch. So, but again, both are very common. Uh, the ERU schedule actually is very, very common on the western slope in Colorado. Almost all utilities have adopted that. And it's a great schedule because it does get to this more customized bit of going in these increments of .5 and whatnot. So, but there are some administrative issues associated with that too. So, next slide. So, that's the basics or the real high-level summary of our capacity fee study. I'll pause real quick, see if there's any questions, and then I'll just go into this real quick, or if you'd rather just have me go through this quickly and then, um-
We might have some questions on, on those fees, but why don't you just keep going?
Next, okay, next slide then. Um, so, talking with the mayor and Monica, we were talking about, well, Raftalis does other things. That's kinda why I had that first slide up there. We're not just a utility finance consulting. We do other stuff. We actually have engineers on staff and I'm an engineer as well. And we do capital project delivery. We've been helping a number of communities prioritize their capital and what we've found is that a lot of communities have a master plan. They have all of these projects they need to do, but in terms of prioritizing them or having time to sit down and try to prioritize them is really difficult. And getting those questions answered. So, we offer these services of sitting down with communities, utilities to, you know, peel back the onion, ask those questions about, well, are you doing this? You're doing this? Have you done this first? You need to be doing this. And we can help put together a capital program based on the projects you've identified. And it's really a comprehensive review. I'll give you an example of, we're working in Cripple Creek, Colorado, which is a small community down by Colorado Springs. They had a litany of capital projects they'd been needing to do for 20 years. We finally have prioritized them. Now, whether they have all the funding for that, you know, remains to be seen, but we've helped them prioritize what needs to be done, what needs to be second, and done, done second. And so, it's been a real benefit to them and, and the council as well. So, next step, or next slide please. Here are the basic steps. I won't read each one of these, but we do go through a comprehensive process. Uh, we, we bug the engineers quite a bit. And we walk through the whole process. We put together a prioritized capital plan and it's based off of best industry standards. We're not just making it what we think you should do. We look at what are the industry standards in terms of how often do you TV your sewer lines? And how often do you exercise the valves on your, and hydrants and all of that? And what's the cost associated with that? What's the replacement schedule on your mains? What's the replacement schedule on hydrants and so on and so forth? We worked through all of that and that's really the benefit. And what, the key benefit is if you want to come back and do a financial plan or a rate study, you've got this prioritized capital. And now you don't have this kind of wish list of capital projects. You have someone that's, that's definitively laid out over a 10-year period. You can develop a financial plan. Where do those revenue adjustments need to be in order to finance and fund all those capital projects over the 10-year period? So, anyway, capital project delivery. Um, so that's just one of the other services we own. I just thought I'd provide a little more detail on it based on our discussion earlier. So, uh, this concludes our, my presentation on the capacity fees. It was kinda quick. It was short, sweet, so I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
I'll start off. Todd, so you talked about the master plan. In your experience, we're, we're in the middle of a master plan. What do we need to add in from this report or your information? What do we need to add to the master plan?
If, uh, my sense is that, uh, once the master plan is complete, we kind of benchmark that against what we've got in our memo. Because a lot of the things in, in our memo that we came up with are just kind of based on their best estimates and things like that. And we knew, we had talked about the master plan not being ready in time, that going back and just confirming some of the values where we can with, with values of the system, but also capacities of wells and redundancy and that sort of thing. So, I think it would be a good idea to, like I said, look at the results of the master plan, find where they have definitive results and things that have been, you know, checked and whatnot and compare and see where there needs to be updates on there.
So, would you recommend that we, obviously, we give this report to Cushing-Tarrell? They might have some findings. They might write a chapter or something in the master plan. Or do you think that after the fact, we take and add an addendum or something to the master plan that can be updated, you know, every few years to reprioritize the capital projects?
I'm, I am so sorry to interrupt, but I think you're both talking about two different master plans. He's talking about a water master plan and you're talking about the town's comprehensive master plan just-
Is he, are you talking about the water?
I'm sorry, I was talking about the water master plan, yeah. Thank you.
We're in the middle of a master plan.
Yeah, well, I, I heard about, I didn't know about the other one, so. Sorry about that, yeah.
Yeah, wrong master plan. But that, that does feed into ours kind of tangentially.
It would, it would be great to get a copy of the master plan because those things are really, those things are very critical to, to use. A, a master plan and a budget, you can do an entire rate study and, and a fee study from that. So, uh, it's always nice to be able to have that second opinion on the engineering side. And again, just kinda ask those questions, have those two bits of, points of contact of, of information to when putting that together.
Um, so I'm sure we have some questions. I'll start on this side of the table.
Can we go back to the real page?
Yeah.
That's my question.
Yep.
Okay, so, one, I wanna make it clear. So, this is not, we, like, current, we can't go back and retro, anybody that's-
Sorry to say no.
Okay. Um, secondarily, on the ERU, because I am learning all this, you said 25 fixtures and that's normally a single-family home. So, like, I mean, and when we say fixtures, just so we can clarify, we're talking toilet, sink, shower.
faucets.
Faucets.
Spigots, yeah.
Sprinklers.
Spigots, washing machines.
Okay. So, when we're saying 9,000 per ERU, how does that translate to a hotel and to an apartment complex and such?
I'm gonna turn it to you because you, you probably know better about how you would just-
I can also pull up your report if, if there's any information on that.
There's really not.
Okay.
I left that too.
Yeah, so we would look at, say, if it's a hotel.
Yeah.
We would look at it, how many fixture units are in each room, multiply it by all the rooms, and then you also go down to the lobby because they have fixtures down there. They have fixtures around the outside.
Okay.
Do they have a pool? Do they have a restaurant? So, we add all of those up and then divide it by the 25.
Okay.
Yeah, so they could have-
Because there's a lot of single-family homes, like I was just counting my own house. Like, I don't have 25.
Right, exactly.
But that's just kind of how you would do the calculation.
So, that would be the base. So, anybody who comes in would get that, that 7,900, right. If you have one or you had 10, you're still gonna get that. You get it all the way up to 25.
Okay.
And then we're gonna do half increments after that. So, if you get past the 25 and, you know, 1 and 1/2 of 25, then you'd pay for that. Or if it's 1.6, we're gonna jump it up to 2.
Okay.
If it's 1.4, it goes down to 1.
Okay.
Just simple math.
We've kind of changed to this and based on your recommendation to go to this system, it seems like, because what we were doing is someone would come in and say, I have a single-family residence. And we'd go down, okay, you need to, you're doing a 3/4-line and, you know, it's 1 ERU, so here's your, your cost. Well, we're finding that not everyone fits into that mold. So, we're not going to have, uh, something that says a hotel is gonna pay a number. You literally, we're, the engineers are gonna have to-
Count the fixtures.
Count the fixtures. There's gonna be a process. It's very, um, someone, we're, we're going to be able to tell them exactly what they're going to pay. And it's going to be after all this research that Raftalis has done based on those numbers. So, we're very confident. So we're very confident that everyone will be paying what they should be paying.
Okay. And then, when it comes to the meter size, because I'm always focused on, it's a 30-acre parcel or it's a 5-acre parcel, but they both want a 2-inch meter size, I guess.
Well, just to clarify, the meters go up to whatever size.
Whatever size that you issue, and, but we've recommended here that anything really over a 2-inch, you might want to evaluate independently of each other, because when you look at the demand patterns of meters that they become larger, the bandwidth of, variability of them grows quite a bit. And you might, those two examples you gave, might have two very different types of peak demands. Some, some people have full-on, full demand all the time, no peak demands on the system, they're just running that meter full-tilt. Other ones have a lower usage but very high peaks during certain points during the year and whatnot. And so just very, two different types of demands on the system, which would probably warrant a different fee for both. And that's why we recommend anything over 2-inch to look at that independently.
Okay.
Kevin, what was the size of, what did Casey Rommel put in for his hotel?
So, came off an 8-inch main, the town's main.
Yep.
With a 6-inch. 3-inch goes into the building, has a 3-inch meter, and then they've got a 4-inch water main for the fire.
Right. So that's fire suppression is for. And so, that's not laid out necessarily either, right?
Right. So in that case, exactly, we would look at that. We would, that's why it's to be determined, all those larger ones.
Right.
Because they're going to have peaks in the morning and peaks in the evening, and probably not so much during the day. It's more of a, it's the extended state. That's when people are probably going to work someplace.
Right.
It's not like a hotel where it's kind of on and off the entire day, or it's not like a restaurant that has certain times of the day. Like Melvin's, they're going to have certain times of the day during, all day long, and then nothing at night.
Right.
So, and some of the meters that you'll see is like a 3-inch meter will actually have a, like a 1-inch bypass. So you catch all the flows, those little tiny flows, because they're not used a lot, but when they need it a lot, the 3-inch starts flowing.
Was there, if, if they expand their hotel like they have talked about, will they have to come back and pay any of these?
The 3-inch was for the entire hotel.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're adding fixtures?
They are. But they got a building permit for the entire building.
Yeah, their fees were paid based on the current structure that's adopted per the ordinance, which says that you pay per room. So much per room, there's a fraction.
Don't they have to come back and get a new building permit from us?
That depends on if they don't...
They've, they, they had a current building permit that has been extended. It can be extended for one more year.
But if it wasn't extended...
Yeah, we'll have to talk about that, but I don't want to tie up too much of your time with that. Any other questions for Todd?
No, this looks good.
The report, have we sent the report to everyone yet?
No, I got it late this afternoon.
Okay.
So it was attached to the meeting, we'll make sure you all get that before at home.
It is, it is here. We've poured over this, they have spent a ton of time, obviously, working with town staff, the engineer, to develop all these numbers. It is a pretty basic equation, but it's all the data that you needed to get.
It's the nuances of it that make it, make it challenging.
Right. But this is the report, we will, it's already been posted on our, on our website for this agenda, but we'll probably, you know, send it out to the world and make sure that, I'm sure there's some people that are really geek out on this stuff. But, yeah, and then we just have to figure out exactly how we have to implement it. So I'll let the clerk talk about that. What are the next steps as far as implementing these numbers?
So Craig Melody, myself, and more recently Kevin from Jorgensen, has been finalizing a draft of a revision of the utility billing ordinance. So, and in that, so what, I mean, the numbers themselves aren't finalized, or what our recommendation to council as far as what the fee should be is not, is not final. We are waiting for this piece of it. So, can you go back to the, just the numbers?
Sure. Presentation. Oh, yeah.
On the presentation, yeah. So just for anybody who's curious, currently, our connection fees per three-quarter inch line are $5,000. So, they were calculated to capture the cost to connect from main to curb. Now, if it was done through a developer, those costs were pushed to the developer and the town collects a fee. However, there are, there are people who, the town currently per ordinance goes out and installs that connection from main to curb. It costs about $9,000 for the town to connect somebody, for a water connection. Sewer connection currently is $9,000 per ERU. So that's probably closer to an actual cost to install connection main to curb. So what I envision, though, there's going to, we're going to make some recommendations about how connections get done in the future. And, because the town, it's, it's a huge, it's very difficult with every, all the challenge, all the responsibilities they have for them to also then do the excavation from main to curb. So we're going to be making a recommendation that shifts that to the property owner and lowers the connection fee cost just to reflect the actual cost that the town incurs to connect them, which will be much less, and then institute a capacity fee.
Yeah. The connection fee is going to be more reasonable for what our actual costs are.
Yes.
And we're going to be implementing a capacity fee.
Correct.
Based on their recommendation.
Correct.
So, connection fees are going down. Yay! But, the capacity fee is going to be more realistic for the growth of the, the entire, what's the word, our entire system.
Yeah, backbone system, right.
And so, and this is vital, that we do this, and that's why it was so important that we, we did this now, because with the rate at which the town is growing, you know, annexations are happening, big swaths of land are coming into the town, and they're, I'm sure, very interested in what we're recommending here. So the timing is great on this and we just need to figure out how to implement it as soon as possible, so...
Yeah, and, and, and just one thing further. So, connection fees represent operating costs and will, will be posted to the operating budget. Capacity fees will not.
Yeah.
So they will, we will set up a process to manage the long-term repair, replacement and payment of our system that we have now, or to complete projects that need to be done. So the way the money is handled is, is going to shift as well, so...
Yeah, totally different.
Yeah.
It's going in, capacity fees are going in.
It's going to be more appropriate to protect the system long-term.
Correct.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, I wanted to point out one thing I didn't do earlier. It says calculated maximum supportable fee there. That represents, this is the fee that we can support up to that amount based on the information available. So council has the ability and discretion to adopt from zero to whatever that fee is. So it doesn't necessarily have to be that number, it's, but it's the maximum supportable fee that we've calculated. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
I think it makes a lot of sense to use your recommendation, because this is all kind of new to us in the state of Wyoming, so that's part of the reason why we hired you to tell us this. But, yeah, we'll see, we'll see how it pans out.
All right.
Any other questions for Todd? Well, thank you so much for all your time and coming here.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure it was, I'm glad you came and we got to see in person.
Yeah.
We hope to have you here with your families sometimes.
Yeah, probably sooner rather than later.
Yeah. We'll give you a couple of the secret camping spots that only the locals know. Anyways.
Fantastic.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're, you're more welcome to stay, but I wouldn't, if you want to take off, it's...
Yeah, unfortunately, you need to call to work.
Okay, we'll let you go back to work. All right. So now we have public comment on agenda items, and this is an opportunity, if anyone has anything, they'd like to comment on for the action item, this is your time to do it. So, we'll give you up to three minutes and a total of 20 minutes. Did anyone come to make a comment on an agenda item? Oh, okay. Here's, here's Dan.
Dan Scal, planning and zoning. Shay, to answer your question, we don't have any 30-acre parcels in the town of Alpine.
Thank you.
Okay? So we are...
I'm talking future.
Yeah, but at the, at the moment, we don't. And so it's comparable to quarter acre, half acres.
Okay.
All right.
Well, and another, another point is, like, if someone's bringing in 30 acres, it's unlikely they're going to bring in an 8-inch pipe, so we're not going to calculate that. I mean, they're going to do something.
Exactly.
But then every single unit is going to have their own, so, like...
I think it's more on the hotel front. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. But, yeah, good point.
And they'll, I think, they're, from the information I've seen, the hotel front, we are going to be covered. I would hope so. But, yeah, thank you. Actually, hit the button.
There you go.
Hi, Alec Ross Frye, resident of Alpine. I've got two questions, I guess, one regarding the Raff Tellis, the presentation. Last year, there was a Supreme Court ruling, Sheets v. El Dorado, which I think plays into what we're looking at here. And the basic takeaway of it was that it, they, the court opened up new, opened up for individuals to sue municipalities or any legislative body for violations of the takings clause. So, I didn't hear Todd mention it, but that's something that we need, as we're assessing new fees, we need to be careful and very transparent in order to protect our tortures down the line.
If you have any concerns about that, definitely send an email to Monica and she'll make sure that she distributes it to us.
Okay.
Just, yeah.
It's, it's not outstanding concern, it's just something that, you know, he didn't mention it among his, among his legal review.
If you bring it to us, we'll, we'll make sure we ask him about it.
Yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll get the answer.
And then, just a question to, for Mr. Leesberg. He was looking at, they're pulling a pump from the main well that needs to be serviced. If we need to be expanding our capacity at the pumps...
Flying saddle.
Flying saddle. Can we look at if the old pump rebuilt is feasible to put in there? And that way we can kind of efficiently...
So, this is, the ones on, good question. The ones on, at the flying saddle are much smaller wells, they could, the pump that is going on the, our largest one, would never work for that one. So it's not like we could reuse it. But like Craig said, we are going to get some information on what it would take to upgrade those, and I think it's a small price to pay to give us a little bit of, you know, we, we need to try to insulate ourselves from things happening like they did just now. So, I, I will also say, and I don't know if you had anything else, but I will also say that the water master plan is, with what just happened, although it was very painful for the town, it actually is a benefit from that process, because now we can say, look at our aged system and what happened to us, and you need to help us fix it. So it's like really good timing from that standpoint, bad timing for the town of Alpine citizens, but good for that. So anyways, appreciate your comments. All right, let's get into it. We have a second reading for ordinance number 2025-001. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve second reading ordinance number 2025-011, land, use and development code.
On second reading.
On second reading, yeah.
I second.
And we have a second from council member Scafidi. Any, any discussion? Let's, let's see, okay, there's, I think we have just one document here, Madam Clerk, that has the changes that happened since the last meeting? Okay, there we go. We're going to ask Mr. Sanderson about this section. This was kind of brought up, if I'm not mistaken, after the last meeting. This is to repeal, did, did this come after the meeting with the codification people?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so they mentioned it in our codification meeting when, that Mr. Sanderson attended here at that town hall with us. And it just so happened that the following day, a citizen went through our books and found it.
Yeah.
Well, she didn't find it because it wasn't actually in the book, because I pulled it from the book to scan it for the meeting the day before. So, yeah, so very funny, same ordinance showed up in two days.
Mr. Sanderson, in your opinion, ordinance number 59 was basically, I don't know what the correct terminology, useless because of the land use development code, the way it was adopted maybe in the early 2000s, correct? Okay. So this language basically clarifies that even more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of a balance of suspenders.
Yes. And then, once we have the codification, it'll be completely taken care of.
Complete codification. We'll, we'll repeal everything, we'll give everybody a chance for 20 minutes to go out and ransack the town. And then we'll institute...
Law, laws again?
Yeah.
It'll be martial law for 20 minutes and then, okay.
And our...
Right. Did, did you write this language for this, or did someone else?
I had, I made a comment, but I don't recall.
It was provided to him and he, he said, okay.
Okay.
I believe.
All right.
Read it just to make sure, Jim.
I did read it.
And then, does the short term apply to this, or is this a separate conversation below? If you go back to the agenda?
Um...
It's a different conversation.
Different conversation.
Okay.
Is this...
A short-term rental.
Oh, oh, okay. So, let's, let's talk about that real quick. So, Councilmember Larson, I'll let you speak onto this, because we just received this from you a short time ago.
Yeah, unfortunately, like I say, I sent it, do we not have council outlook?
It probably got updated.
We do, but when the migration happened, it, it started defaulting to this weird ending. And if you're not careful, that's where it goes.
Okay.
And, yeah, it returns it to you.
So just, for me, for the future, best to send it individually?
Yeah, it's probably safer.
Okay.
For us it is.
So, let's see, oh, okay, you do have it up there. Yeah, so this is just something to address short-term rentals, because it does mention it in the LUDC specific, it doesn't mention short-term rentals, it mentions bed and breakfast. So what I found is, is a lot of definitions are getting away from bed and breakfasts, and they're reclassifying them as hosted short-term rentals. And you have a few different ones here as far as the definitions. Hosted short-term rentals, local representative rentals, non-hosted short-term rentals, and then just your blanket term of short-term rental, what it is, and a short-term rental unit. But gathering all this, adding it into our LUDC, so we have language in there that, that addresses short-term rentals, especially right now. I mean, I, in our, my neighborhood, there's three, four, five, six, possibly seven, one's up for sale right now that has been a short-term rental in the past. And the biggest issues have been garbage. Just today, two of the short-term rentals, the garbage cans up and overflowing in it. And then also, issues we've had in the past besides noise is parking. So that's a conversation we need to have.[1752.12] So that's a conversation we need to have, how many, what is parking, how many parking spaces does one short-term rental get? Especially in the wintertime. A big thing in our neighborhood is, not just parking, but because it's winter, people are bringing up, you know, 20, 25-foot trailers with their snowmobiles and getting stuck, not making it, tearing up the roads, tearing up what would have been a nice plow, but definitely something to address. I've had other citizens throughout town say, "When are we gonna do this?" So this is just something that I beg, borrowed, and stole from others, and so far, it looked like a good conversation starter.
Is your recommended recommendation to add these definitions to the land use development code?
All the above, yeah.
Okay, and all of the restrictions to the land use development code as well?
Definitely a conversation to have, yeah.
Why wouldn't we have a standalone ordinance for this?
Well, right now, it's, I'm addressing it just because it does mention it in our LUDC.
Okay.
So whether we want to take that out of the LUDC, specifically the wording of bed and breakfast, and say, "See ordinance, you know, short-term rental, see ordinance, blah, blah, blah," whatever we decide to do, but definitely need to have the conversation about it.
Okay. Mr. Sanderson, do you have any thoughts on that, like, just having the definitions for, right now, and then reference an actual ordinance? Is that the way to go about it, in your opinion?
Mr. Sanderson, I'm sorry, can you?
It needs to go in some logical place, I would think, within the LUDC.
Do we have a logical place that you guys have found in the land use development code?
I haven't looked, I haven't looked at it in that light. I mean, certainly, Jeanne and I could, I, my gut, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but my gut's telling me, yes, we may need to add the definitions to the land use development code, so the language is consistent, but I feel like the restrictions need to be in their own ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I basically said.
Oh, sorry, I was out of the room.
No, that's fine.
Well, and I'd almost like to have a public workshop on this, because I feel like we're getting into government overreach of like- Okay, so I don't know, for me, I mean, I get your definitions, but I really want to hear from the public.
No, I totally agree, and we've talked about this over the last two and a half years, that I have heard from people that they, you know, think that we should, we should put something in place, but I totally agree. This is not something that I just want to push through. Adding definitions to the land use development code is not harmful in any way, we're adding definitions all the time. I think we would have to agree that we like these definitions, and that they could be used in a future ordinance. But no, I agree, this is something that we, we're gonna need to get feedback from people as well.
Yeah, so I guess the only thing I'm confused on, like, definitions is local representative, because that, to me, that's-
So like a property manager?
Yeah, but I mean, would we put that in now? Wouldn't that be part of the ordinance versus a definition? Because what we're defining is we're defining Airbnb into a short-term rental. But a representative, to me, goes along with, like, if you were gonna do an ordinance, and I mean, I'll be calling Star Valley Ranch, because I want to see, they permitted, I want to know, what's the feedback, what's the dynamic? It's kind of like the county, we pass ordinances, but there's no enforcement. And I know we have an enforcement officer, but you're just starting to get into this.
Well, I mean, that's a great point, like, if we put something in place, who's gonna enforce it? So we're gonna have-
It could be enforced through the court, but I guess you're also gonna have to have some sort of penalty provision.
Right, we're gonna have to do a ton of research, come up with penalties and-
My second point, if you will, as far as parking goes, I don't think you can-
Dictate how much-
Well, I mean, you have as much parking as allowed in that area for whatever the use is. So if it's a residential, and they have two spaces, they got two spaces, if there's public parking available on the street, I guess there's public parking available on the street, as long as they're not violating-
Well, the biggest parking complaints that have gotten back to me are on Terrace Lane, where you have a short-term rental with, that can house, oh, I'm not sure, 12, 14 people. And so at times, they've had six, eight cars show up, and there's only three parking spots, and as we know, Terrace Lane is supposed to be 20 feet, but I don't even know if it's that wide, and then cars going in, especially again, the wintertime, and this would be something to address also at a later time, to have, to look at having specific parking restrictions, specifically for the hill or any place that has 20-foot wide or less roads. In the wintertime, that 20-foot wide sometimes turns into 10 or 15.
Would that be as part of the permit process, that whoever's taking out the permit, you've only got these spaces, and you need to tell your guests elsewhere, or we'll find you?
Exactly, yep.
That can be part of the application process, and then, you know, your permit allows you, you know-
X amount of parking.
In the winter, no parking on the road, whatever, something like that. Did you have something to add to the conversation?
We are still, we have homework, and we're all revisiting certain sections, and I'll make sure and bring that up with the definitions. And just see, I think Rachel had the definitions section, I'm not for sure, we'll figure it out.
Or the glossary or whatever.
Yeah, so we'll make sure and visit about that as well.
Well, and how does it work, because I always, especially planning and zoning, so it's HOA first, municipality second? So like, if we're gonna say as a town, we allow short-term rental, you have to have a permit, then if your HOA says, "No, we don't allow short-term rental."
Then no is what it is.
They supersede, yeah, they supersede, yeah.
I would say, and since we have you, what is the timeframe, do you think, when you guys will have kind of your suggested changes?
We're gonna go through it in our next meeting, on what we came through and all of our homework that we had to do.
We've all taken another chapter, we're taking the chapter two, three, four.
Okay, do you think it's reasonable that, like, because we can have our third reading at the next meeting, would you guys have your things ready?
It would depend on what Jeanne's plans are and how she's able to put it all together.
Because what I don't want to do is just shove a bunch of stuff in there on the third reading, but I am totally open to, we can go over your changes in August. You know, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that was the point, yeah.
So, tabling it.
My suggestion would be, right now, we table this, these additions for the, what we're trying to accomplish with the changes we've already made, and we kind of push it to them, and add the definitions to whomever on their committees-
I'll make sure and print it out and have it-
And then we add those when they decide.
And we'll go through and revamp and go through what the definitions are.
We did, in the land use development code, it does talk about short-term rentals. We have it specified in the last time, there are definitions about it, and there's a section where it talks about it.
Yeah, we did hammer that out.
So-
Yeah, remember chapter verse-
Oh, of course, yeah. I think, if everyone's okay, I don't, I would prefer not to add these tonight, for sure. Let's talk about it, and I don't know if we would add them necessarily, maybe we'd look for you guys to make a suggestion.
We'll go through them, yes, sir.
Make a suggestion, whether or not you think we should just add these definitions on our third reading. I don't have a problem adding just, you know, whatever, six definitions, but I don't want to add any more meat to it. I want to have a chance to talk to-
Yeah, we'll do it in sections, for sure. Maybe we'll just do the definitions as per your request, and then we'll continue on with our discussion on our books and what we were looking at on each one of our sections, absolutely, we can do something like that.
Sounds great.
Okay, I'll make that note.
Okay, thanks. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So back to the original here, I'm just gonna blow this up real quick to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Sanderson regarding this change? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of ordinance number 2025-011 land use development code on second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance carries on second reading. Okay, let me clear this out. All right, next, we have-
And then just FYI, I just forwarded that to you guys.
Oh, yeah, I did too.
Okay, we have resolution number 2024-024. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution number 2024-024 authorizing the acting, planning, and zoning administrator to extend the expired commercial building permit for the wastewater pretreatment plant and to waive associated building permit fees.
Second.
We have a motion, it's always, also been seconded at discussion. Madam Clerk, this came up just recently, as we kind of found that we might-
So, the resolution is 2025?
Oh.
The agenda has a typo.
The resolution has a typo as well, then?
No, it says 2025.
Agenda.
It's on, it says 2024 on the-
Oh, okay.
Gotcha, so you'll need to amend that, or correct it.
Yeah.
Yes, so with all of the shifts recently with the wastewater pretreatment plant, we pulled the permit and realized it has been expired for a year.
We didn't anticipate it taking this long.
No, that's probably true. So, so we would like to though correct that.
Yeah, so basically, this is, allows us to, basically, extend our, or give ourselves another building permit? It's not extending, right?
No, we're gonna extend it.
Extend it.
Extend it.
Okay, we're extending ourselves another building permit for a year, and we're gonna waive any fees that we would charge ourselves.
Yes, and then additionally, there was, there's some work that needs to be done for the electrical permitting, but the state is there, and the electrical contractor that we hired is taking care of that.
Okay. Do we have an amendment to the motion?
May I make an amendment to the motion to approve resolution number 2025-024?
Yes.
There we go, authorizing the acting, planning, and zoning administrator to extend the expired commercial building permit for the wastewater pretreatment plant and to waive associated building permit fees.
And we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second, any discussion?
All those in favor of said amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amendment carries back to the original motion. Does anyone have any questions on this? Why, why we're doing it, okay. All those in favor of resolution number 2025-024, say aye.
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 Resolution carries. To 2025-025.
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-025, a resolution authorizing staff to prepare and submit an application to cancel the certificate of public convenience and necessity with the Public Service Commission.
I second it.
We have a motion, it's been seconded at discussion. Madam Clerk, can you give us a little background on this?
Yeah, so we, when the North Star system was purchased by the town of Alpine, the administration at that time was not required to utilize the Public Service Commission to help with their rate setting and rule-setting. However, I imagine at that time that they thought that that was in the best interest of the town of Alpine, because it does allow you to, if you're able to make a case with the Public Service Commission, you can, you can increase your rates to an amount higher than the state statute allows. Yeah, which is 125% of the rates in town. Recently, we annexed the largest portion of what was the Public Service Commission system into the town of Alpine, and so really, all that's left is the airpark.
Few people in the service.
Customers, and so there is, there's a lot of work involved. We're not afraid of work, it's not difficult work, but it's just a whole nother process. So there is quarterly reports, and then annual reports and semi-annual reports for different things, and then at the end of the year, there is an entire financial process that happens for them. And for 30 customers, there's just not enough benefit. The other thing is, I didn't realize until recently, when I finally had, got ahold of them, had this conversation, I went out to tell Mel about it, the people outside of the town of Alpine are paying lower rates than the people inside the town of Alpine now. And the word, I have always heard, it's one and a half times, it's one and a half times, and I never, I never pulled up and looked at the rates. I don't, I don't do the utility billing, it's just, you know, it's not in my wheelhouse, I should have looked, I guess. And so this will get us actually to a better position.
Just to clarify, what happened was, the rates in the town kept going up over the years.
And the rate rates outside the town have not, because there's an entire-
There's a process to go through to get the rates-
Which you have to go to a hearing in Cheyenne to raise your rates.
Right, so technically, by doing this, what we thought people were paying one and a half times outside, they're now gonna be paying 1.25, or 125%, and paying more than, than we thought they were.
Yeah, and then, and then their rates will increase consistently with any rates in the town of Alpine.
Whatever changes we make, they'll be automatically-
Correct, it's one system, and we treat it as such.
I think it's a good plan, so thank you for bringing it to us. Do we need any more clarification on that? All right, all those in favor of resolution number 2025-025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, resolution carries. All right, what do we have next? We have resolution number 2025-026. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to amend the resolution number 2025-026 to include the name of the selected applicant and to appoint that individual to fill the vacant term on the town of Alpine Town Council.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Clarification, did we need to get the resolution on the table first and then amend it?
Yeah, that was the amendment in there.
Did we, okay, so what it was-
Yeah.
We didn't start the resolution.
I think, I think we need to start with the resolution. But you could, you could-
You could actually just amend it and then get it on the table.
I think when I, when I had given, when we had talked about that, I envisioned somebody making a motion to adopt the resolution, inserting the name of the person.
That works, too.
Yeah, why don't you just, why don't you just take that, your motion back, and then just say the motion, and then fill in the name that you would like.
Make a motion to rescind my amending motion.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Second.
All those in favor of rescinding your motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, try it again.
Okay, let's try it, take two. Make a motion for resolution number 2025-026, a resolution assigning Amy Weirde to fill the vacant term on the town council for the town of Alpine.
We have a motion, it's been seconded by Councilmember Burchard, discussion. So, do I have to write one up here? Okay, so we had three people apply for the vacancy on town council, and we interviewed two of the applicants tonight, and we are bringing forward the appointee in this resolution. So, are, now, we have the motion on the table, we can update this after it's been passed, and then I'll sign that one, okay.
And then swear it in.
Yep. Tonight, or we'll do it next, well-
I guess you want to talk to your family, right?
See if this is fine.
See if they still agree.
We'll, you've got two weeks to get it figured out.
We'll execute the sentence now.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Proceed.
So anyways, I think everything's in place for that. Any other discussion?
Thank you all for applying.
I'm sorry?
Thank you all for applying.
Yeah, absolutely, appreciate it, and, yeah, unfortunately, we had to fill it, but we were confident that we had some good applicants and will be in a good place moving forward, for sure. good applicants and will be in a good place moving forward, for sure. So with no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number 2025-026, a resolution assigning Amy Weirde to fill the vacant term on the Town Council for the Town of Alpine, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Resolution passes. Congratulations, or condolences, I, people...
Be careful what you ask for.
Yeah, exactly. Are we prepared to talk about the employee policy procedures? Did everyone have a chance to look at the changes that just came through the other day?
No.
Or it's the same?
It's the same.
What we discussed last meeting, we've just gotten it added.
Okay, well, do you guys feel comfortable pulling it off the table, then, discussing? Okay.
Make a motion to remove from the table resolution number 2025-022, a resolution adopting the updated employee policy and procedure manual.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of said motion to remove resolution number 2025-022 from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? None? Okay, we'll get this figured out eventually. Okay, so now it's back on the table.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-022, a resolution adopting the updated employee policy and procedure manual.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Discussion. Okay, so that is the resolution, and then we have the policies and procedures. And remind me what the one major change that we are waiting on?
So we added the short-term disability...
Oh, short-term disability.
Policy, and...
Kind of deal with this.
Yeah, there was, and there's, so there's an addendum that I've, that I've, we've included at the end. Last, I think it's the last page.
Oh, okay, I see, yeah.
Okay, so we've got...
So we added the short-term disability insurance, 80/20.
And Councilmember Scafidi, I know you were out of town on the East Coast, so we may have basically lost you at the end of that discussion.
I stayed on.
Okay, good.
Till midnight.
But, yeah, so this was, all the things that we discussed, they have put into this document. And... What was the next?
That's okay. We don't...
Okay. So...
So that. So basically, what I did is, and I've, I've added as an addendum to the handbook, however, it only affects the employees who were employed full-time on or before April 21st, 2025. And so this then describes the process that you guys recommended of how to implement the PTO.
My only thing would be to add a heading here that says what this document is.
It's a memo, but yeah, we could add that, you mean, in the book.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An actual addendum.
Yeah, it needs to say addendum in what this is, but do we need to do that now, or do we need to?
We could just make a quick amendment to do just that, to change the...
Page 28.
Page 20.
Okay, something's messed up there, too.
Yeah, when Sarah added the, when you added the last two pages, it added, it changed the first number, but not the sec, the total.
The total number of pages?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's look through before we...
So name it, I mean, that's a typo.
Is there any, yeah, there, anything else?
What do you wanna, what do you wanna call it?
Uh, just...
What it says, transition of...
Yeah, it's the transition of vacation and sick leave.
Yeah.
PTO.
Addendum A, transition of vacation and sick leave to PTO, and optional short-term disability insurance.
Okay.
But is there any, let's go through it before, see if there's any other changes.
Let's do only ones.
Oh, yeah, all, everything in red was there the last time?
Yeah.
Do you need to note anything in there that says the addendum is attached?
Could we just put it...
Like in the body, usually you would say...
Put in under, under PTO.
So we need to reference that there's a...
I mean, I mean, addendum, usually in a contract, you would add.
Right.
We do not want it in the policy. We, we don't want it in the policy, because it only impacts employees from before April 21st.
Yeah.
It's going to be removed.
Yeah, it won't, it won't be there forever.
Yeah, it's gonna be removed in two years. So I would recommend, though, that we note it in the...
Page 22.
In the...
Under the PTO paid time off.
Well, also...
What?
Go under PTO paid time off, C addendum A.
Okay.
If hired before April 21st, C addendum A, and then we'll have to remove it in two years.
Here's another thing, once, your page numbering might be all messed up after...
No, I'm keeping track of that. So that'll, that'll come in my addendum, or in my amendment.
I don't think that's statutorily an issue.
Okay, I, I just want to land this somehow, but Jeremy, what I'm suggesting is, like, once we take out sick leave, we might lose a page or something, you know? So all the numbers might be different anyway.
Yeah.
Well, you're just tiling it as an addit, I mean, I would just...
Yeah, let's just, let's just add, add the addendum at the end. Don't mess with the page numbering, and then we'll, do we need to adopt?
Well, I do, I do like the idea that Jeremy had, that under the title of PTO-paid time off, just put in parentheses, for employee, any full-time employees hired before April 21st, 2025, C addendum.
Okay. What, what's the disadvantage of waiting two more weeks to do this?
There's no, we, I can get it done now.
No. I just, I'd love a document that's the filed document at this point. That's just me personally, but I'd love to...
Throw it back on the table.
Are we putting it back on?
It's, we don't really miss out on anything by going two more weeks, correct?
I mean, no, it just gets done in two more weeks.
Yep. I would suggest we just put it back on the table, and then we'll clean, clean all this stuff up, and...
Okay.
Okay.
Make a mo, uh, make a motion to put on the table, return to the table, resolution number 2025-022, resolution adopting the updated employee policy and procedure manual.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling resolution number 2025-022, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? It's back on the table. Or it's being tabled, whatever. Okay, so now we'll go into any other general public comment that anyone has? No? We can adjourn?
If that case, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. 8:55.